Tiene que ser cuando? Si la temperatura, si vas a ver la temperatura. Si vas a ver la temperatura que está, entonces vas a poner a apagar. O sea, ¿la debo una llamada? Le debo una llamada. Oh, sí? Ah, no lo vi. Lo de la cosa, ¿en qué estamos?
¿Alguien de la participación pública?
De eso.
Publica participación, si solo quiere hablar, tiene dos minutos y medio.
La placa.
No, usted no, usted también es público aquí. Bueno, obtenga cuanto más tiempo quiera. ¿Quién es el bombadillo? Él es el que está esperando a que se acerque. Él es el que quiere tomar una foto. Bueno, él, sí. Sí, él es el que quiere. No tenemos que darle, él es el que tiene que hacerlo. Pero yo solo quiero.
Let's go. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting for the Lawrence City Council. Today is Thursday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Act of Twenty Twenty-Two, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person in the city council chambers as well as remotely. The Zoom link for this meeting was provided to anybody that requested through the clerk's office. This meeting is also be transmitted live through the Facebook Lawrence City Council page as well as the YouTube Lawrence City Council page. Madame Claire Rocco.
Councilor Levy.
Present.
Councilor LaPlante. The council did let us know he will be joining us virtually later in the evening. Councilor Luzzon is noted as absent. Councilor Del Rosario.
Present.
Councilor Mamal.
Present.
Councilor Reyes.
Present.
Council Vice President Infante.
Present.
Council President Rodriguez.
Present.
Please join me for a moment of silence. The moment of silence will be in honor of Nice Aforo, a greatest Lawrence vocational school that just passed away. Now, join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands what nation under God in the principle with liberty and justice for all.
We have nominees to be approved for today. We will have those ready for our next meeting in August. We're gonna continue with public participation. The public participation have specific rules, and the rules are as follows. Please refer to this council as a whole. You're gonna have two and a half minutes to speak. When you hear a beep, or sounds, or an indication, that means that you still have thirty seconds to go. At the two-minute, two-and-a-half-minute mark, you will proceed to allow others to speak. The first person that we have in public participation is H. Mali. Name and address for the record, please.
H. Mali, fifty-three Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members. We, the citizens, are united to support our police officers. Lawrence Police Department with impeccable leadership by Honorable Chief Morris Adler doing excellent job to protect our citizen. Lawrence Police, this union of pride and honor, thank you for making Lawrence a safe city. Million thanks to our DPW leadership and employees. Thank you for making Lawrence a beautiful city. Lawrence Inspection Department, thank you for excellent job. We support your union. We must hire more inspectors. Lawrence Public School with impeccable leadership by Honorable Superintendent Ralph Guerrero moving forward. Lawrence Teachers, thank you for excellent job. We support your union. Lawrence Teachers, because of you, Lawrence will rise again. Lawrence always strong, Lawrence always unite. We are proud to support our veteran. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your bravery. We must hire two position in a veterans department. We must have the best commission on elders in our city. We must pay our long-term city employees the same at the newly hired. We pray for the safety of all police officers and first responder. Lawrence Fire Department with impeccable leadership by Honorable Chief Delaney doing excellent job. We, the Laurentian, are proud of the new Lawrence Police building, the best example of the best police department in the nation. Lawrence Police, indeed a shining light in the sky of Lawrence.
Thank you. The next person that we have is John Rigaud. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is John Rigaud, twenty-two Hilltop Avenue. I am here because we had several complaints during this past election. I am one of the candidate, yes, but I heard, I heard a lot of complaints from the citizens. I also saw a lot of not, not so good things. They're not, they're clearly not illegal, but I looked it up and it falls in the gray line like passing piece of paper telling who to vote for, like fake ballots, basically fake ballots, and under the United States law, the federal law is against the law. Also harassing voters, you know, that's unacceptable from any, any each way, that's very unacceptable. Any elderly person that wants to go vote should not be, have to go through a mob of people trying to, you know, trying to convince it to vote for somebody else. That is unacceptable, and I say it to several, several, several persons, several people, stop doing that. As a candidate, I told my team, do not approach anybody unless they approach you and ask you where to go for vote. I encourage every single one of you candidates also to do the same with your team. Respect the voters. That's the most important thing, is democracy. If we're not, if we're not gonna follow the democracy of this country, stop doing politics. I will stop doing politics at the minute I break the rules. Follow the rules, please, respect, respecting the constituents. That's what we ask, please, okay? And also, voted by mail. I found out, I went to different places, and it's like people say, if it looks like a dog, walk like a dog, and quack like a dog, it gotta be a dog. I go to different places, everybody tells me the same thing, they already came here and picked up the ballot. So, I'm not afraid to say it, okay? I've never been afraid of anything, and I'm here protecting the rights of my people. And telling you, all you, all of you that running for reelection and for those candidates that also running to come in, if I find out, if I see you, if I find proof, believe me, I am gonna expose you, every single one of you guys, I don't care. I don't care, all I'm, I'm running to, running for, I'm running for the people, I'm not running for you, I'm not running for, for any, any government, I'm running for the people.
Stick to the, stick to the point of.
So, all I'm trying to say is, play the game fair, that's all the people want, play fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person that we have is Rich Russell, Councilor Russell.
Good evening, Councilors, Rich Russell, thirty-four Cross Street. I want to dedicate a portion of my time as a moment of silence to Charlie Kirk. Charlie was an advocate for one of the American virtues that I swore to uphold as a member of the military, freedom of speech. I may not like what you say, what you have to say, but I will defend your right to say it, except for your right to say that there is no fraud possible in mail-in voting. I will vehemently disagree with you. Remember, Democrats advocated for mail-in voting is the best thing since sliced bread. Now that the system is broken, they wanna fix it. When a ballot is not in the hands of a voter, a poll worker, or in the ballot box, the ballot is unsecure and anything can happen with it, enough said. Now that the primary is over, we will have to wait to see if the four losers, myself included, remove their signs within the required thirty days. Somehow, I don't think we're gonna see that, but I am in the process of doing that. Thank you for the time.
Right, all these names are gonna be submitted for the record. We have a few, a few city employees that are here today, that as according to C D, since they've been here since early this morning working, I would like to take them first. Madame, Madame Che, Madame Che from the Biden Finance Committee, do you mind taking those two items starting by item three sixty-three twenty-five, if there is no objection?
Through you, Council President, Biden Finance Committee, item three sixty-two dash twenty-five, authorization to expend one hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred five dollars from the grant funds from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health awarded to the mayor's health task force slash Lawrence Mass in motion for active transportation, saved routes to schools and parks and open spaces. Was sent up to the full council as a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second. Table properly, second discussion. Anybody from the seat?
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, we continue with that one, that's fine.
Was this the one that was tabled?
Counselors, any questions for this item, item three sixty-two twenty-five? Is the one hundred twenty, one hundred twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and five dollars grant fund for the Massachusetts Department of Public Health awarded to the mayor health task force in Lawrence Mass in motion for active transportation, safe route to school and parks? They have, essentially, this project is all about mobility, and it's related to one of the most important issues that we have, which is a safe road to school and other major issue that we have in the city of Lawrence that we've been working on for quite some time. So, any questions in regard to this matter? Since there is none, I call the motions, I call the questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? All those in favor, please say aye. Any names? The ayes have it, item three sixty-three twenty-five, Madame, Madame Vice President and Chair of the Biden Finance Committee.
Item three sixty, three sixty-three dash twenty-five, the authorization to expend ninety-five thousand, ninety-five thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars with twenty cents from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Enhancement Trust Fund was sent up as a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
There is a motion on the table, properly, second discussions. This item is about the chair rights and, and the money that the city of Lawrence get to enhance payment markings around the downtown and all over the city. Any questions in regard to this matter? Since there is none, I'll call the questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ayes have it. Now, we have two items from the table matters that the attorney, Houston, is here for, item three fifty-seven and three fifty-eight. Those are on the table matters. Yep.
I make a motion to untable item three fifty-seven dash twenty-five.
There's a motion to untable item three fifty, three fifty-seven.
Second.
Twenty-five. Properly, second discussion, there is none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
This is, both of these contracts, I'm gonna give you the same information. The reason this is here before you is because this is a request for a four-year contract as opposed to the normal three. These are environmental companies, they are dealing with our brownfields in the city of Lawrence, the money is being paid for by grants, so what we're asking this committee today, this council today is to allow a four-year contract, because it's gonna take them that time to work on these brownfields, so.
So, it's a four-years contract, since that, since there is over, a contract over three years, it need the authorization of the council.
Correct.
It's just, it's a hundred sixty-four dollars, a hundred.
Hundred sixty-four thousand, seven hundred fifty. And it's all being paid for. It's all being paid for by grant.
Yeah, and for the four years.
For the four years.
Counselors, any questions in regard to this matter? I hear none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
There's no motion to approve?
Oh. What's the motion to table? Motion on table, yes, sorry.
Motion to approve item three fifty-seven dash twenty-five.
Second.
There is a motion to approve, properly, second discussion on the approval for the contract of four years. I hear no questions, now I call the question for the approval, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ayes have it, now, item three fifty-eight twenty-five.
Motion to untable item three fifty-eight dash twenty-five.
There is a motion to untable, properly, second discussion, there is none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, now, motion to.
Motion to approve item three fifty-eight dash twenty-five.
There is a motion to approve, properly, second discussion, same idea, a contract over three years, need the approval of the council. Any questions, counselors? I hear none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ayes have it, so now we have.
Thank you very much, counselors.
Thank you so much. If you can stick around for a couple of the top topics, that would be helpful. Counselors, we have all business, and I guess the administration is here for that too. Mister Spanner. Are you, are you here for item seventy-eight, I'm sorry, item eighty-nine, nine, and ninety-one?
Is it Richard Rodriguez?
No, that's for the veto from the mayor.
I can be here.
Huh?
Let me see. What's the number again, Council President?
Eighty-nine, ninety, and ninety-one, on the all business. I don't know. Second page, at the, at the bottom, the last three on the second page.
Eighty-nine, twenty-five?
Eighty-nine, nine, and ninety-one.
No, I will leave it for.
So, we are going to be discussing these three items, the mayor have vetoed, item eighty-nine, twenty-five, item ninety, twenty-five.
Yes, I can briefly discuss, I mean.
Okay, ninety-one, twenty-five. So, counselors, let's, can we take it as, yeah, let's take it as a.
Can you, can you give me just a few minutes?
Okay, no problem.
Okay, if you don't mind.
All right, any other city employee that are here from a specific item? Yeah, let's, let's, what's the Richard item? That's on the table matters, the last one, right? Yeah, item three fifty-nine, well, he's also here for that, so let's go to the top of the agenda while he's coming back.
Counselor President.
Yes. Yeah, in a couple of minutes. Yeah, let's go to the top of the agenda. Now, we're gonna go top of the agenda while we waiting for the senior advisor on those four items. Item fifty-one twenty-four, the proposal of anti-camping ordinance, prohibition of the, authorizing camping in public space. Madame Claire, please read the notice for item fifty-one twenty-four. I know. I know he's not.
Do you wanna leave the public hearing?
I know the police chief is on vacation this week, so I.
Now vacation.
He's in a training, in a training.
I'm sorry.
He's in a training.
Yes, a training, I knew it was.
All right, item two fifteen twenty-five. Yes. Madame Claire.
So, just for the members of the general public that are here with regard to document five five-one dash twenty-four, which is the proposed anti-camping ordinance, due to the fact that the police chief is not available, the public hearing is gonna be opened, but we're going to continue it to our October seventh meeting, which is for first Tuesday in October, so we do apologize for people that are here waiting for that item, but it will be continued till October seventh, so it will still be a public hearing at that time, you'll still be given the opportunity to speak on October seventh.
And this is for item?
That's for document number five five-one dash twenty-four.
Item five five-one twenty-four will be continued for our next meeting. Thank you for everybody that show up on, on support to the item. Item two fifteen twenty-five, two eighty-eight twenty-five, two eighty-nine twenty-five, two ninety twenty-five, two ninety-six twenty-five, and three oh four twenty-five. Madame Claire, please read the notice for all those.
The public notice regard to document number two fifteen twenty-five, two seventy twenty-five, two eighty-eight twenty-five, two eighty-nine twenty-five, two ninety twenty-five, two ninety-six twenty-five, three oh three twenty-five, and three oh four twenty-five reads as follows. Notice is hereby given that the Lawrence City Council will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. in the council chambers, two hundred Common Street, Lawrence, Mass. Pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, and in accordance with recently revised City Council Rule Two, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person and remotely to accommodate persons, to accommodate participants with health considerations that prevent them from participating in person. Access codes for remote participation are available from the city clerk, eileen.bernal at cityoflawrence.com, or nine seven eight six two zero three two three zero. The meeting is also available on Facebook and YouTube. The purpose of this hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendments to revised ordinances of the city of Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following sub-paragraphs to section ten, point three six, point three four zero of the municipal code handicap parking in the proper alphabetical order. Document number two fifteen dash twenty-five, Row Street, south side, from a point two hundred nineteen feet west of Newton Street to a point two hundred and thirty-nine feet west of Newton Street. Document two eighty-eight twenty-five, Springfield Street, north side, from a point two hundred sixty-four feet east of Springfield Street to a point two hundred and eighty-four feet east of Springfield Street. And document number two eighty-nine twenty-five, Bigelow Street, northwest side, from a point twenty-eight feet southwest of Sanborn Street to a point forty-eight feet southwest of Sanborn Street. Document number two ninety dash twenty-five, Hemlock Street, south side, from a point one hundred and ten feet west of Lawrence Street to a point one hundred and thirty feet west of Lawrence Street. Document number two ninety dash twenty-five, Hemlock Street, south side, from a point one hundred and ten feet west of Lawrence Street to a point one hundred and thirty feet west of Lawrence Street. And document number two ninety-six dash twenty-five, Berkeley Street, west side, from a point two hundred and six feet south of Park Street to a point twenty, two hundred and twenty-six feet south of Park Street. And document number three oh four dash twenty-five, one twenty-one, East Haverhill Street, south side, from a point forty-five feet west of Clarence Terrace to a point sixty-five feet west of Clarence Terrace. Further amended by deleting the following sub-paragraphs of section ten point thirty-six point three four zero of the municipal code handicap parking. Two seventy dash twenty-five, Elm Street, north side, from a point twenty feet westerly of the intersection of Lincoln Court to a point forty feet westerly of the intersection of Lincoln Court. And Elm Street, north side, from a point forty feet west of the intersection of Lincoln Court to a point sixty feet west of the intersection of Lincoln Court. And document number three oh three dash twenty-five, Custer Street, south side, from a point two hundred and twenty-four feet west of Prospect Street to a point two hundred and forty-four feet west of Prospect Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Councillors, what's the motion as a block?
Motion to approve.
Can, can, can you propose it as a block?
Motion to propose the, the items arrived by the, by the Council President as a block.
Right. Uh, there is a motion to approve all of those as a block, properly second discussion. Are here none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ayes have it. Item, uh, Madam Clerk, please read the notice for item, uh, two ninety-one twenty-five.
Motion to waive the preamble.
There's a motion to waive the preamble, properly second discussion. Are here none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ayes have it. So Madam Clerk, please read the notice.
Document number two ninety, two ninety-one dash twenty-five is with regard to the modification of a no parking area at three forty-three South Broadway. The purpose of this hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of the city of Lawrence. To be further amended by deleting the following sub-paragraphs of section ten point thirty-six point zero one zero of the municipal code. Parking prohibited on certain streets, which is South Broadway, west side, from a point one hundred and thirty-six feet southerly of the intersection of Inman Street to a point two hundred and forty feet southerly of the intersection of Inman Street. And adding the following sub-paragraph in proper alphabetical order to section ten point thirty-six point zero one zero of the municipal code. Parking prohibited on certain streets. South Broadway, west side, from a point one hundred and thirty-six feet southerly of the intersection of Inman Street to a point one hundred and ninety-eight feet southerly of the intersection of Inman Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Public hearing is now open. Uh, anybody from the public that wishes to speak? There is none. Public hearing is now closed. Councillors, what's the motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, properly second discussion. So, uh, we adding more spot to we prohibited no parking or reducing?
Reducing.
Reducing. So we allowing, uh, people to have more spaces to park? Right, and anybody from, um, anybody else that wishes to speak? Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
There was a, um, a no parking area that had been extended in front of a home at three forty-three at the request of the prior owner, and that owner has left. So the current owner, um, is asked if we could please reduce it back to a smaller area.
All right. Yeah, um, anybody else? All right, uh, I'll call the questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Um, Madam Clerk, please read the notice for, for item, uh, three twenty-six twenty-five. Childcare parking at forty-one Ferber Street. Three twenty-six. Yeah, we got, we got those already. Yeah. Yeah, we did on the first one. Yeah.
Economical. Um, document number three twenty-six dash twenty-five is, um, the purpose of this hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of the city of Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following sub-paragraphs to section ten point thirty-six point four five zero of the municipal code daycare drop-off zone in the proper alphabetical order. Document number three twenty-six dash twenty-five, Ferber Street, west side, from a point forty feet south of Everett Street to a point sixty feet south of Everett Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Public hearing is now open. Uh, anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Are here none? Or, public hearing is now closed. Councillors, what's the motion?
Motion to approve and waive the, and waive the thirty days.
There's a motion to approve and waive the thirty days, discussion. There is no, no discussion. Uh, at this time, I call the questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So now let's go to ordinance. Oh, yeah, sorry. Uh, forty-six, uh, still, no, no, that's, that's, uh, pending matters. Let's go to ordinance committee. Okay, hold on a second. Communication from the mayor's, uh, city officials, city attorney, there is none. Committee report, we already finished with the budget and finance committee. So now we're going to housing committee, there is no reports. Ordinance committee, uh, we, with the chair of the ordinance committee is not here, but we have the vice chair that is gonna be, uh, talking about the items from ordinance committee. Vice chair from the, uh, ordinance committee, Councilor Reyes.
Through you, Councilor President. Item one ten dash nineteen, traffic study, Swan Street, expanding and traffic control, uh, motion to withdraw.
There is a motion to withdraw. Can I hear a second? Properly second discussion. Are here none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item, uh, one twelve nineteen.
Item one twelve dash nineteen, traffic study, East Haverhill Street, expanding and traffic control, uh, motion to withdraw.
Second.
There's a motion to withdraw, properly second discussion. Are here none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item one eighteen nineteen.
One eighteen dash nineteen, entire fence around Bacon Love, motion to withdraw.
There's a motion to withdraw, properly second discussion. Are here none? All those in favor, please say aye. The ayes have it. Item, uh, one sixty-seven twenty-five.
One sixty-seven dash twenty-one, parking.
Twenty-one, sorry.
Parking fifty men, dash one twenty-one, Bay Street, Midas Daycare, motion to withdraw.
There's a motion to withdraw, properly second. Uh, Madam Vice Chair, Madam Vice Chair, uh, Reyes. Did, did we check with that, uh, daycare owner to see if they still have the daycare?
Uh, yeah, I'll check. They are still near it, but we want to request the sign we have already ordered into family childcare.
Okay. All right, no problem. Motion to withdraw, properly second discussion, there is none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any names? The ayes have it. Item two oh four twenty-five, twenty-one, sorry.
Two oh four?
Two oh four.
Two oh four dash twenty-one, Bay stoping for a school committee elected member, uh, motion to withdraw.
There's a motion to withdraw, properly second discussion. Are here none?
Council President.
Yes, Councillor, Councillor Large Anna Levy.
Through you, Council President. Uh, the reason why is this, uh, withdrawal from the ordering committee is because this is part of now of the new, uh, law.
Compensation package.
Exactly, for the new committee that is coming, uh, for the next year.
There's a compensation.
Uh, thank you for. Just for, yeah, just only for clarification.
All right, we'll talk. All right, there's a motion to withdraw, properly second discussion.
I already hear.
Are here none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item one fifty-seven twenty-two.
One fifty-seven dash twenty-two, new light on pole number thirty-one dash ten, net forty-eight twenty-four, dash four seventy-seven, Howard Street, motion to withdraw.
There's a motion to withdraw, properly second discussion. Did then, did the light get installed, Councilor Levy?
That's the hardware, and, yes. That one is already done.
All right, uh, motion, motion to withdraw, properly second discussion, there is none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, item two fifty-three twenty-two.
Zero nine dash twenty-three, fifty minute parking, Monday to Friday.
No, it's, uh, two fifty-three, uh, traffic study.
Dash twenty-two, traffic study, Handling Street, surrounding schools, some, S Street, uh, motion to withdraw.
Second.
There's a motion to withdraw, properly second discussion.
Discussion.
Councillor, uh, Councillor Vice President Infante.
Thank you. Just a quick qualification on the Hamlet Street situation and surrounding streets around that school zone. I've been in consistent communication with Captain Cirillo and the, and our, um, um, S R O, Lieutenant Caraballo, and we've been talking to folks in that area pertaining to that, to that situation. We don't need a, a traffic study at the city level, but there, there has been some improvements and discussions, and the residents of that area have also requested another, um, Hamlet Street meeting pertaining to the situation, so that'll be coming up as well.
All right, uh, there's a motion to withdraw, properly second discussion, there is none. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Um, item, oh nine twenty-three.
Item oh nine twenty-three, fifty minute parking, Monday to Friday, eight A M. to six P M., three fifty-nine, Lawrence Street. Juana Ida, motion to withdraw.
There's a motion to withdraw.
Second.
Properly second, by Councilor Levy, discussion. There is none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item two seventy-nine twenty-five.
Two seventy-nine twenty-five, three forty-one, South Broadway, request a council assisting with enforcement, Jeffrey and Sandra Petriello, motion to withdraw.
Second.
There's a motion to.
Withdraw.
To motion to withdraw, properly second, by Councilor Levy, discussion.
Discussion.
Councillor Vice President Infante.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Vice Chair of the ordinance committee, can you just quickly, I know, cause, um, Mr. Petriello has been here many times. What was discussed at the ordinance, uh, committee? I, I know the answer, but just so, so that it's on the record.
Uh, yes, the motion wa, withdraw because he put the item in the agenda to listen the case one more time. But if the reason is the company is close to his house, he want to, I explained it again, the decision through the call. And he had the opportunity to, to read the, the bylaw and the decision through the call and explain one more time. His concern about it, the containing and everything close to his house.
Thank you.
We're listening and after that, the, the committee decide motion to withdraw.
Thank you.
All right, no problem. There's a motion to withdraw, properly second discussion, there is none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Um, item three thirteen twenty-five.
Three thirteen twenty-five, resolution honoring Lawrence firefighter, firefighter, Jim J. Jimenez, uh, motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve resolution, uh, three thirteen twenty-five. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Properly second, um, discussion.
Discussion.
Councillor Rosario.
Through you, Councilor President. Uh, colleagues, those firefighters, we are gonna adopt the recognition, but it's gonna be an event at the fire station on Ames Street. So we waiting on the day for the, um, chief from the, uh, fire department. The lady, they actually request this, that they save her life. Butt plaques and other stuff, so we waiting for the day so we can go reconne, recognize them at the station on Ames Street, cause she lives right across the street. When that incident happened, she, uh, her kids went and knocked on the door and they went across, walking and, and saved her life. So we waiting on a day to prepare an event, but I, I wanted to get this through, so that way we just need to print that, yeah, the presentation and go up there. So we all will be invited on that day.
Thank you, Councillor Rosario. Uh, that is important to recognize the important, uh, the difference between a resolution and any other type of recognition. A resolution is an opinion of the city of Lawrence that is only get, uh, through the city council, the city council approval. So it's an official opinion of the city of Lawrence, uh, this resolution in honor of the Lawrence firefighter, Jim Jimenez, Jose Murphy, Joseph Murphy, and Wilson Ventura. So it's a motion to approve, properly second discussion.
Council President.
Councillor Vice President Infante.
Thank you. Through you, Council President. I wanna ask my colleague, can you send us a calendar invite when you have that date?
Sure. It will, it will be a calendar invite for us.
Thank you. Uh, through you, Mr. President, we do a block, as a block?
No, we, that's, it's important to take the vote individually for resolution. Item, uh, three thirteen twenty-five, can, there is a properly second discussion, there is none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any names? The ayes have it. Item three fourteen twenty-five, resolution honoring Lawrence firefighter, Joseph Murphy. Can I hear a second? I mean, can, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve, properly second, uh, discussion. There is none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item three fifteen twenty-five, resolution honoring Lawrence firefighter, Wilson Ventura.
Motion to approve.
Uh, there is a motion to approve, properly second discussion, there is none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ayes have it. Madam, Madam Vice Pres, Madam Vice Chair of the ordinance committee, item three seventy-six twenty-five.
Three seventy-six, dash twenty-five, old gold dealer licensing, uh, Wilkins, Jesus D., Wilquito Prenda I. Renee is merging, uh, motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve that, uh, old gold dealer's license to Wilquito, uh, the Jesus, uh, Wilquito Jesus D's. Properly second discussion.
Um, just to clarify on this, the, the document should be entitled Old Gold and Secondhand Dealer License. And so, um, just to help the, I don't know, is my, I broke it down into two items, and it really isn't. The license that we actually issue is called an Old Gold and Secondhand Dealer License, so that item will stay the same as the next item?
Yeah, the next item is to withdraw and merge in the both name.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, so basically, uh, it will be, the license will be, um, related to both. Old Gold Dealer License together as a pawn broker license, which is basically what the clerk just explained. There is a motion to approve, properly second. Any questions? Any questions to the property owners? They are located, they are located at the corner of Excess and, um, Excess and, and, uh, and Broadway.
Yes.
So they here in case anybody have questions. Wilquito Prenda. All right, there is, uh, no questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item three seventy-seven twenty-five, Madam Vice, Madam Vice Chair of the ordinance committee.
Pawn broker licensing, Wilkins, Jesus D., Wilquito Prenda, that one is the item to, motion to withdraw.
There's a motion to withdraw.
Second.
Can I hear a second? Properly second discussion, there is none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item three seventy-nine twenty-five.
Three seventy-nine, dash twenty-five, Grand Marathon, Recaudación de Fondo, Paras Bombero, República Dominicana, y el evento se va a llevar, uh, en campaña común, September twenty. Uh, motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve, properly second, uh, discussion. Discussion. We have the, uh, the people that are going to, um, do that, these events, here in case there is any questions. There is none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Personal committee, there is none. Public, Public Safety Committee, there is none. Economic Development Committee, there is none. Uh, Committee of the Hall, there is no reports. All business, let's go to item, uh, seventy-eight, seventy-eight twenty-five. No, no, no. Let's do the eighty-nine twenty-five, together with ninety twenty-five and ninety-one twenty-five. Can I get a motion to, uh, take this as a package, councillors?
Motion to take items.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, ninety, and ninety-one dash twenty-five as a package. Second.
There is a motion on the table, properly second, uh, discussion. There is none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We have the administration here, they have some, some words for us.
Council President, uh, good evening, councillors. Um, I had to get back and get feedback on the information.
Gotcha.
The reason, based on your question, can you ask it, so again, and then I can repeat it, so the question.
Essentially, we have those item, which, which is the creation of the job discretion for the three positions that are gonna be on the next school. for the three positions that are gonna be on the next school committee that the city need to post, receive application, and subsequently, uh, once that, uh, the deadline comes, uh, interview and, uh, and appoint those members of the school committee. So the mayor have vetoed those positions, and, uh, we either, you either have an opportunity to, uh, withdraw the veto, or we have the opportunity to override the veto.
Yes, correct, so I would give you the explanation, which are two. Uh, the mayor feels that the description of the roles and responsibility is in the charter, and applies to elected, both elected, as well as, um, appointed, that's one. Number two, so in other words, um, it's open to any residents to apply to the board.
No, that's not how it is.
No, I mean, that's the, that's the first comment, second comment is that he feels that there's a, a problem of overreach, uh, into his executive powers.
Into what? Into what?
Into his executive powers.
Uh, essentially, I, I guess that the charter that you guys are reading is the one that was the old charter, not the new charter, related to chapter five, when we changed it back in March, I believe. This charter that we approved through a home rule petition back in March, specifically state that we're gonna have three appointed, uh, school committee members, and one of them is related to, uh, or with an experience on, um, in law. The second one is with a, uh, a person that have a specific experience related to finance. And the third person is ha, have to have, have to be an, uh, somebody with a specific experience related to education. That's the current law that we changed back in March, and, uh, and so it's, it's not anybody that can apply. It's somebody that have that, those expertise and those years of experience, based on the discussion that we had back then, uh, when we approved, uh, the home rule petition, uh, and the mayor signed the home rule petition, and the legislator from Boston approved, and subsequently, the governor signed the home rule petition change into an state law that affect the City of Lawrence only. So, once we did that, we need to develop the, uh, the, the, the job description to, for us to be able to, to gather, uh, resumes and people that want to apply, uh, that requires people that live in Lawrence that are over eighteen years old, uh, above, I, I mean, uh, eighteen years o, older, and also to have that specific, uh, specific, um, experience around what we have discussed on the home rule petition. So that's why we create a job description, we've been working with, uh, with the job, that job description for about three months, I believe. Um, and then we finally have a product that is gonna serve, uh, the current law and, uh, satisfy the need of the, uh, of the current charter that we have, that we changed back in March. So by vetoing this, essentially what's gonna happen is that we're not gonna have, uh, if we don't override the veto, we're not gonna have, uh, the people that apply as per the charter to be able to appoint those people in, uh, in November, and subsequently, have a, uh, a full school committee in January. Uh, that's on the, um, on the portion of the law, and, uh, the me, the veto, the mayor have vetoed. This council have an opportunity to, uh, work with the mayor, if you guys wanna override your own veto, or we can override the veto, so what is your choice?
Well, Councillor President, his position is to distinguish, uh, distinctions. One, that is the credential, which also came as part of a suggestion when we, we oversaw and made recommendations concerning the structure, uh, and the control, uh, the structure of the controlling board. Uh, one thing is credentials, another thing is job description, because a member, even though they may represent those three categories, would still have to vote collectively on decision that doesn't have anything with their, their experience.
That's correct, that was, that was something that we should have, that type, that argument, that was gonna be awesome if we have it back in March, when we have the discussion for the home rule petition. I remember you sitting on the, on the board, and you said, yes, up to you, whatever you guys decide, that's what we're gonna have. And we discussed that for quite amount of meetings, I believe, over five.
Um, Councillor President.
And, uh, that was not coming up, Councillor Vice President.
Councillor President.
Yeah, Councillor Vice President Infante.
Thank you, when we were reviewing, uh, through you, when we, we had an ad hoc committee.
Madam Chair, can we have, can we acknowledge the presence of Councillor La Plan that is online, as well of Councillor Luzon that we haven't called the call, the local, I mean, we haven't called, uh, presence yet.
Um, this time we're gonna call the role for Councillor Luzon?
Uh, present.
So we're gonna call the role for Councillor La Plan. He's muted. Councillor La Plan, if you could, um, you're muted.
Can you hear it? Councillor La Plan?
I'm gonna turn to the President, thank you.
Alright, Councillor Vice President Infante.
Thank you, Councillor, Councillor President, through you, we created an ad hoc committee specifically for these type of discussions, and unfortunately, I think we had, I, it's been a while now, but two to three meetings, and those meetings went nowhere, because the opposing parties, instead of working and trying to get, you know, trying to get to, to the, to the foundation of that ordinance, or, or the home rule petition, I should say, instead focused on attacking each other, one another, and I'm not just saying this to say this, this was all livestreamed, so, um, it's unfortunate, because we, as a council, in good faith specifically, and I know you're bringing this, this up now, but in good faith, we created that adha, ad hoc committee to bring everyone to the table, and also open discussion for the public, and unfortunately, I was the one as, as the chair of that ad hoc committee that requested us to just deal with it at the full council, because the work wasn't getting done at, at the ad hoc committee level.
No, and then it's, uh, Councillor President, it's like, uh, we, we did have the discussion here at this, at this level, we have multiple, uh, discussion and changes, uh, to the, to the home rule petition that we sent over to Boston that get approved. At this point, it's, it's not even the home rule petition. Going back to the discussion of the home rule petition will diminish the work that we have done with the creation of the job description, that we are three step ahead of the discussion that we having. Fundamental issues, potentially we can fix that, but that gotta be fixed through another home rule petition to, to adjust what you guys, the secretary branch wants. By all means, you can propose to change the charter, but as of right now, uh, the, the current school committee, we need to form the current school committee, and that's been done through the voting, which three large, uh, school committee members, as well as expected to have three others, uh, applications, or three others applicants that are gonna be, uh, uh, picked and, and picked and subsequently appoint, uh, to be served on that committee. So you got, the, the questions to you, the secretary branch, are you staying with that, uh, with the veto of the, of the positions?
Yes.
Or, uh, okay.
The, the position is like I mentioned, and we still...
So that's in the back. Give me one second.
Yeah, we got, yeah, the position, uh, yes, is the answer to your question is yes, and I wanna clarify, it's based on the fact that, of the job description, there's this, there's a clear distinction uh, in regards to the credential of the individuals that apply, based on the backgrounds and, and what has been stipulated. And the difference would be, a job description, to put a job description for each one of the categories, they still will have to vote on items that are not related to each of one of this category and their level of expertise.
Yes, we know that.
Right, so I just wanted to clarify it.
No, there will be a school committee members, three of them gonna be appointees.
Right.
And three of them gonna be elected, that's the current, the configuration of the school committee that we have in the City of Lawrence.
Correct.
So, what we doing is the job description to people to apply to these positions. That's what we doing.
Good.
Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to, to acquire resumes from people that want to apply and serve.
I convey the message to the position, thank you.
Through you, Councillor President, is the mayor still the appointee and we confirm?
No, as per that, uh, as per the current, uh, home rule petition, the council received the, the resumes, interview, appoint and confirm. Please read it.
This body changed the charter several months ago. The mayor pro, signed off on that, and that went through the legislature, Representative Moran sponsored it, it came back out. So this is a changed charter, now, our charter was changed, the new section five point one with regard to the composition reads, "There shall be a school committee consisting of seven members that shall exercise general management and control of the public schools of the city. Three members of the school committee, who shall be known as at-large members, shall be nominated and elected from the voters in the city." That, we're having that election right now, um, who shall, um, and three at-large members who should be known as appointed members, shall be appointed by a vote of the city council. The mayor shall serve as the seventh member of the school committee and as a chair with full voting power, with full power to vote. Um, this body, you... Maybe they should come from the city attorney, I don't wanna overstep my bounds, but I, I...
Correct.
This body can't, if you wanna post a job, which you have an obligation to post a job in the new charter, you can't do it in private, you have to do it in public, which is what you did. You wrote a job description together at public meetings, you posted it at public meetings, and you came up with a job description, through the only process that you can do as a body of nine is at a public meeting. Then you took that job description so that you could post it, you brought it to the mayor, and he vetoed it. So now you're in a situation where you can't revise that job description unless you override the veto. Um, maybe the city attorney could explain it better, but that job, those three positions have to get posted. It's your responsibility as a body to post it, you can't create a job description unless you do it in public, and the mayor has overridden, or has vetoed the job description that you wrote. So we're kinda at this really weird stalemate right now, and that's, I guess, um, the situation that you're in, maybe the city attorney can come up with a different solution, but I don't see one unless the body, the body has to create the job description, it's their position to post. They created a job description and the mayor vetoed it.
Right, and, mm, the job description is, because they're, they're appointed.
Right.
So you...
They, by this body, they're appointed.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, we changed the charter, and that's what the charter says.
Yeah.
Councillor President.
Councillor Vice President Infante.
Thank you, uh, through you, what I'm a bit confused about is, I mean, this home rule petition was at the, the legislative level. Concerns could have still been brought up to our state delegation for changes, et cetera. Um, and I heard from the senior advisor, you said that the mayor feels, and I'm, you know, I'm trying to be objective about it, but the mayor feels that there is an overstep of, of his executive branch power.
Correct.
However, the flip side of that is that the executive branch of the state, the governor, signed this into law in December. The governor is above the city council, above the mayor of Lawrence, above any, any legislator elected locally or state, like, the governor of Massachusetts signed this into law. This is our current city charter pertaining to the school committee. So that's, that's, that's a little, so, that's a little, you know, I, I understand the mayor's frustration, but we're now talking state level issues, or not issues, but situations.
Yeah, I think his concern is picking and choosing.
Yeah, I mean, and we understand that.
I mean, it's forgetting about this mayor, if any other mayor would be in the position, uh, and I don't wanna make this argumentative, because it, it's, that's not the point, but...
Uh, through you, Councillor President, but that's why I'm saying senior advisor that, no matter whom, whomever it is, it's, it's the governor, doesn't matter if it's Mayor Brian DePena or the councillor Stephanie Infante, it's, we're talking about the, the titles, right? Talking about governors, who is above all, all of us put together.
No, 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 I, Councillor, Councillor Vice President, it's, 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 it's even simpler than that. We not overstepping the mayor's executive power, we do have positions that are under the city council. City clerk, it's under the city council, city attorney, it's under the city council, the board of, uh, the, the, uh, what was the other position that is under? Board, no, 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 another board, another, another position is under the city council from a board. And, and now, it ended up being that the city council have also three more new positions, which is the three school committee members. That's on the charter, so it's not like we're stepping on boundaries of anybody. Uh, that was the discussion that was, that was, that what, that we have. Now we creating the, the, the job description to might, to continue, and the first course, course of action at this point is, uh, to override the, the mayor's, uh, veto. So, at this point, I will call the question, I will, I'll ask for a motion to override the mayor's veto.
Motion to override the mayor's veto.
There's a motion to override the veto.
Second.
Properly second, discussion. Uh, Councillor La Planes, can you hear us? Yes?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Uh, this, and, any discussion on that overriding the veto? Alright, I'll, this done. Councillor Levy?
I, I, I don't know, but I would like to have like a the city attorney over here.
Okay.
To explain much better the situation on this regard.
Is the city attorney here? He left? I told him to stay. Huh? Uh, I, the seat, what do you, what do you need, Councillor Levy? He's not here.
As far as I know, the, the ordinance and...
The charter.
And the charter, you don't know, mentioned that, okay, we, we do the interview, and we get these people and everything, but the mayor is the one, like, it has to approve.
Uh, what in the charter says that?
Eh? I don't have the number.
Okay, that's not on the charter. That's the desire, but that's not on the charter. That, we changed the charter, we discussed it here, you were part of it.
I was, I was part of this, yes, but I still, okay, so we had all the changes ready on that?
Yeah, we have, we, the city clerk just read a couple of second ago.
Did we have everything approved back also from?
From the state?
From the state?
Of course. Yes. It's on the ballot now, actually, that's why we having, uh, the current election of three committee, uh, through, three school committee members at large, because that's what we proposed. That's what we approved, that did, that, that's what the, the legislator of the state approved, the, the senators approved, and the governor signed.
Yeah, this is very clear, so we approved three at-large and three people that is gonna be nominated from people from the city according to the job description that we had, and from there we has to go forward.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's, uh, that's part of it, and also what was part of it is that the council is that, uh, au, authorize a party to be able to appoint and confirm those three school committees that are going to be appointed. Just like the city clerk, just like the city attorney, and just like a member of a board, that I just can't recollect the name of the board. So we do have, uh, three people, the City of Lawrence, that we do the same then, we interview and hire them.
I think there is a perfect, Councillor President.
Councillor Vice President Infante.
Um, two things, one, after the governor approved this law, uh, leader Frank Moran even went on, on record on, on a news article talking about, about the approval when Governor Healy, um, signed it. And also, just a perfect example of the city council process, when there was a vacancy in the school committee, um, school committee member slash attorney Sandra Edwards had to go through that process that is now in, in our charter, where she had to apply through the city website or the, through the city. The city council personnel committee interviewed her, we sent up the recommendation to the full council, the full council then interviewed her a second round, and then the, the city council confirmed and appointed that, that member um, onto the school committee, so it's the same process that we, that we as a body selected to include in this new, uh, charter language.
Yeah, also, uh, Councillor Vice President Infante, just for the record, uh, Senator Pajano today, back in two thousand ten or eleven, he was also appointed by the council. Uh, Pat Mariano, when she started, she was also appointed by that, uh, by the council. Pat Mariano, when she started, she was also appointed by that, by the council. So the council have, you know, we have done a very good job when it comes to appointees and members of the, of the committee that went ahead and have done a tremendous job for the city.
I just, Council President, I, through you, if I may, I, I just think it's, I mean, the fact that this is even veto, we're talking about elected powers or, or branch powers, and the highest power already made a decision. If, if we're going to change anything, it has to go through the proper protocol, which is another agenda item, editing, modifying the home rule petition, et cetera. But right now, I think, I, I think the, the mayor's office should have done the due diligence. You know, this is already in, in law, into, was approved into law.
So any other questions when it comes to the motion that we have in front of us to override the mayor's veto?
Okay. Council President, I just want to caution the city council, and that's why I think the suggestion to speak with the city attorney would be the best to get the legal recommendation. However, if you override the veto, veto, the mayor may decide to, to challenge.
There is no, are you, but, can you repeat that?
Because of, because of the overreach.
Do you, are you reading the charter? You can't do that. I mean, it's, it's like, it's like, oh my goodness. All right, thank you, let's wait for the, for the challenge. At this point, it's like, the charter doesn't allow that. All right, at this point, what we need to do is, what we have on our record in front of us is that, is a motion to override the mayor's veto when it comes to those three positions. And, and for that, we are going to call the questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Reyes.
Yes.
Councilor Marmo.
Yes.
Councilor Del Rosario.
Yes.
Councilor Luzon.
Yes.
Councilor LaPlante.
Yes.
Councilor Levy.
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante.
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez.
I vote yes, what's the count? So the city council have override the veto. Madam Clerk, as per this city council, we authorizing you as the contract person with the personal committee to work, to digitally, I can't say that word. To work with the personal committee to position up ASAP since we need those, those people, the people up there to start applying for these positions. Thank you. Now we are going to all business, which is item 7825.
Wait, here's the which is.
Oh, sorry. The other item, which is basically item, one of the, the, on the table matters on page four, we have.
Motion to untable item 359-25.
What was that, 359?
359.
Yes, item 359-25, there is a motion to untable, properly second. Discussion, there is none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Oh, yes, let's, let's call the roll call, sorry.
Councilor Levy? This is just to untable.
Yes.
Councilor LaPlante?
What's the title of the, of the, of this item?
I'm sorry. It's item 359-25, reclassification of ADA coordinator position.
Yes.
Council Luzon?
Yes.
Council Del Rosario?
Yes.
Councilor Marmo?
Yes.
Councilor Reyes?
Yes.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
Yes. So now, item 359-25, which is the reclassification of the ADA coordinator's position, city attorney Tim Hilton, and the personal, the personal director Garcia, they put this in, and now we have the representation of the mayor's office in front of us.
Yeah, Council President, we, the mayor requested this.
Let's recall the motion, Madam Clerk, what is the motion?
There is a motion before the body, it was made by Council Infante, seconded by Council Levy, and there's a motion to approve, and no vote was taken on that, and that was on at your last meeting on 9/2.
There's a motion to approve? There's a motion to approve, properly second, discussion, now we open the floor.
Yes, the mayor, again, Council President, the mayor, the mayor felt that it was necessary to bring this item and request for this item to be untabled, because he, in which I'm going to read the letter, that he wishes that his council would support the request, especially in the ordinance committee, for it to move the process for the, basically the changes in the salary range for the position of the ADA coordinator. And I'm going to read his letter to the city council, which I believe all of you received. It is dated September 18, 2025, to all, all of you through the city council president. Dear Honorable City Councilors, I write to you today to express my strong support for Mr. Richard Rodriguez, ADA coordinator for the city of Lawrence. Mr. Rodriguez has served our community with professionalism, dedication, and a deep commitment to ensuring that Lawrence is a city where all individuals, regardless of ability, can live, work, and visit with dignity and equal opportunity. His efforts have strengthened our accessibility initiatives and advanced our compliance with the American, Americans with Disabilities Act, and has also successfully brought valuable resources and allocation grants that directly benefit our ADA community. In recognition of his outstanding service and contribution, I firmly believe that Mr. Rodriguez deserves the salary increase he is requesting. I have reviewed this matter carefully and fully support, and am in fully support of this adjustment. I respectfully, respectfully urge the city council to give this request serious consideration as I am confident that the increase is fair, reasonable, and reflective of the important role he plays in our municipal government. Thank you for your attention to this matter and for your continued service to the people of Lawrence. Signed, Brian A. Depeña, Mayor.
Right, councilors, any questions? We have a motion in front of us.
Council President.
Council Luzon.
I don't understand why that letter was not sent with, earlier. I don't understand why this letter wasn't sent earlier. I have, I don't have nothing against Richard, Mr. Rodriguez, but basically, in, me as a part of the personal committee, I'd witnessed that Mr. Rodriguez basically advocating for himself. If the mayor has such a highly opinion of Mr. Rodriguez, why was this letter not sent before? So, oh. I think, if I may finish my point, I think it's unfair for an employee, like, such as a Mr. Rodriguez, to go through this process without the proper support of a mayor that's speaking highly of it in this letter. So for future reference, please include the letter with the package, and that will make our job more easy. And we want to hear from the mayor if he's happy with his employees, with his appointees. That's what I wanted to add. No arguments, I don't need an answer.
Through you, Council President, I need to respond.
Let her finish, and then you can respond.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to put it out there as an observation for future references. There's no need for an employee so highly recommend, recommended, and with such a beautiful letter that you just read for the record, to go through this process by himself. That is unacceptable.
Can you provide us with the letter?
Yes, I can provide you a copy that is kind of wrinkled, but, this was sent to you.
Council President.
Council Vice President Infante?
Thank you. I, you know, I, I do give credit, I always give credit when it's due, and being the chair of the Personnel Committee, I recall that discussion very, very clearly. And I do recall the senior advisor stating, at least you were, at that point you were speaking for yourself, I can't speak for the, you know, for the mayor, anything like that, but you were there, and you did state to the committee that this position was a learning curve, and there were things that you did not understand, that Richard was able to provide clarity on while he was fighting for his raise and his position. So I do, I do want to state that, I, I don't, I can't say anything for the mayor, the mayor was not there, but at least you, you did say that, and it was on the record, recorded live, and I think Richard, you know, was there advocating, nothing, Richard was there advocating for, for himself. But I do appreciate, as the chair of the committee, you stating that you had a learning curve, and that sometimes comes with a job, too.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilor Del Rosario?
Through you, Council President. Also, when it came through the ordinance committee, we actually request those type of letters, because we didn't have it. We request that documentation either from the mayor's office and also through the DPW director, because he's on to that, and, and I'm assuming now that that's why that letter came forward.
All right, at this point, council.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to, and, and thank you, Councilor Infante, because that's exactly what I was going to say. I will acknowledge the comment of Councilor, respectfully, the, the comments made by, by Councilor Luzon. However, this is a unique situation that I mentioned before. Who can advocate better for the position and himself would be the candidate, and I was present. However, the standard practice is that all requests, changes, and regards, or any personnel issues goes through the HR department, Personnel Department, and comes before the committee. We have not sent any special letters for any other positions, but in this case, considering the fact that this is unique in its kind, and that was explained to the city council, that other communities, you have a part-time individual that works, but our population is growing, our reality in the city of Lawrence is different. And you see all the ordinances that comes before you, handicap parking, handicap accessibility, we were even sued in the past, and we thought it would be that Richard, my colleague, would be the best, the best individual to advocate for himself. And he did it before us as staff members and the mayor, and we decided that he would be the best person to come before you. But thank you.
So what we're doing right now is to reclassify, the reclassification of the ADA coordinator position. It is unusual that you see the, the current person advocating for himself or herself on this, this deposition, because, I mean, usually come from the administration, and in this case, it came from the city attorney and the personal director, but it, it was like some type of a cloud when it comes to whether or not the administration was supporting it. Throughout, the support was given to the current servant or the current person on that position, which make a huge difference on, when it comes to doing the work. And we are happy that we have a capable person on that position, which is going to stay there, doing the work for what he calls the ADA coordinator. So thank you. So at this point, councilors, if there is no other questions, I'll call the questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes. The ayes have it, Madam LaPlante is no longer on the, on the zone, so we're good. So now we have two more items, councilors. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Quickly, I'd like to thank the city council for the vote confidence. Also like to thank the best, Brian, Brian, ooh, my speech impediment, Brian Depeña. Originally, I worked for government for many years, and I was not planning to come back because it was a little ugly, but when Brian asked me to come and to represent the ZABU, I had the privilege to say yes. And as of today, I don't have no regret, I'm very happy to work with him, and I'm looking forward to continue to work with him. Thank you all.
All right. Council President, is there any other items for myself?
No.
No?
We're good.
Thank you so much.
Councilors, we have one more, two more things, councilors. We have item 357 and 358, we need to reconsider, reconsider somebody on the prevailing side to be able to reconsider the vote, so we can include that, there is a need of waiving the 30 days since those contractors are already in place, so they can, they can, they can work. Item 357 and 358.
357?
And 358. Those are on the table matters. They were on the table matters, now that we approve them. So now we need to, somebody on the prevailing side need to make a motion to reconsider, so we can go back to the discussion and be able to waive the 30 days on those. So anybody can reconsider the vote.
Motion to reconsider? I mean, there's no prevailing, so.
All of us.
So motion to reconsider.
Second.
There's a motion to reconsider, properly second, discussion, there is none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Council Luzon, you, actually, in the past, you have stepped out for those, for those two items. You were not here when we approved it.
Aye. I can, don't count my vote, I don't remember, I don't recall.
And plus, you were not, you were not here for the vote, so.
Yeah.
You cannot vote to keep it consistent. So those items are, item 357 is the authorization for contract over three years to four years of, for the amount of $164,750 to, to Caceres Associate LLC, and that's the first one. Councilors, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve and waive the 30 days?
There's a motion to approve and waive the 30 days for contract for over three years, specifically four years, for the amount of $164,750. There's a motion on the table, properly discussion.
Council President, if I may.
Council Luzon.
It was not those contracts.
No problem, I just want to mention.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye, but still, you, your vote is not.
No, it's fine.
Won't be, won't be counted.
It's fine.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll, it's up for Council Luzon.
Councilor Levy?
Yes.
Council LaPlante is noted as absent, Council Luzon is not participating, Council Del Rosario?
Yes.
Councilor Marmo?
Yes.
Councilor Reyes?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
I vote yes. Now, item 358-25, can we get a motion to reconsider?
Motion to reconsider, 358-25?
Second.
There is a motion to reconsider, properly second. Yeah, motion to reconsider first. All those in favor of the motion to reconsider, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Now we are going to ask for a motion to.
Motion to approve and waive the 30 days, 358-25?
Second.
For item 359-25, which is the reclassification, no, 358-25, which is the authorization for contract over three years, specifically four years contract for the amount of $164,750 to TRE Environmental, it's been properly second, by Councilor Reyes, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any ayes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Reyes?
Yes.
Councilor Marmo?
Yes.
Council Del Rosario?
Yes.
Council Luzon is not participating, she didn't, Council, LaPlante is noted as absent, Councilor Levy?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. So now we have on the all business, we have item 7825, which is the approved vote by mail, local election, September 16 and November 4. And what we are looking for, councilors, is a motion to a public hearing for tomorrow.
We need a motion first to reconsider.
Oh, yes. The first, as per the clerk recommendations, we need a motion to reconsider, or anybody on the prevailing side, which is the winners of the vote, so, and that vote was, I believe, Council Luzon, Council Marmo.
Motion to reconsider.
Council Levy was on the prevailing side. There's a motion to reconsider, can you hear a second? Properly second, discussion.
Discussion.
This is a motion to reconsider, so we can open the item, and then, item 78-25, which is the approved, approved the vote by mail election, on the local election, September 16, 2025, and November 4, 2025, and the intent is to reconsider and then eventually order a public hearing for tomorrow.
Motion already made.
The motion is already made, properly second, discussion. I hear none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. So now, councilors, what I'm looking for is a motion to order a public hearing for item 78-25, which is the approved vote by mail on local election September 16, 2025, and November 4, 2025, and that, and that, the public hearing will be for tomorrow's meeting. Can I get a motion for that?
Motion to order public hearing for item 78-25, approving the vote by mail local election September 16, 2025, and November 4, 2025.
Second.
Properly second, discussion. All right, there is none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Do you need a roll call?
No, you two.
We're good, okay.
If it were to be voted on tomorrow night after the public hearing, it has to pass or fail by a roll call vote, but tonight, we do not need a roll call.
No problem, just want to mention.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said, please.
So tomorrow's will require a roll call, not today.
Tomorrow, if you vote to opt out, that has to be by a roll call vote, but just to one vote here, you don't need the roll call.
All right, councilors, any other table matters that we want on table? I hear none, so...
So after the public hearing, we don't have to vote?
Huh?
After the public hearing, that's what you said, that we don't have to vote?
You have to do a roll call.
Okay.
So I was asking the city clerk if we need to order the public hearing, if we need a roll call. She said no, tomorrow for the final vote, we need a roll call, not today.
And how many votes do we need?
Huh?
How many votes do we need?
Five, to pass it?
Yep.
Just like a regular.
All right, councilors, there is no table matters, we're going straight to new business, and on the new business, we have item 382-25, handicap parking on 69 Berkeley Street, that's going to the ordinance committee, 383-25, handicap parking 46 Cross Street, that's going to ordinance committee, 384-25, handicap parking at 122 Meadow Street, that's going to ordinance committee, 385-25, handicap parking at 8 Osgo Street, that's going to ordinance committee, 386-25, handicap parking at 23 Trinity Street, apartment one, yes, on the main address, 23 Trinity Street, please fix the item, that's going to ordinance committee, item 387-25, removal of handicap parking, 5 Dorana Street, that's going to ordinance committee, item 388-25, contract renewal for city clerk, for the city clerk, that's going to personnel committee, item 389-25, resident parking on Wesley Street, that's going to ordinance committee. Now, we're going to date for the committees. Committees, the ordinance committee. Yeah, next Tuesday.
Tuesday, seven.
Yep. Next Tuesday, and then, we have no budget on finance, we have personnel.
Monday at 6:30.
Monday at 6:30. And then, ordinance, I mean, we have housing and the rest of the, of the committees, you guys can work, work it out with the city clerk and announce those dates.
Wednesday at 6:00.
Okay, Wednesday at 6:00. All right.
So you have those items?
Yep. For public safety, economic development, there is none, all right, all right, we got...
Public safety, we do have an item, but I haven't heard, I...
Budget and finance, there's a people's table that we need to show up for last meeting, please, and something else, we need a quick meeting for budget, you want to work through?
Yeah, but it's nothing urgent.
She want a couple of grants on you.
Okay.
Do we have any people's table on that?
Well, you do like Monday at 6, you have Monday at 7.
Monday, Monday at 6.
Budget and finance?
Yeah, Monday at 6.
All right, all right, there is any other committee? There is none, so wait.
Monday at 6, Monday.
We'll probably, probably call.
You have personnel and budget and finance on Monday? 6 or 6:30?
6 and 6:30.
So, Councilor, if you want to change the date for housing, and then eventually you can change it, because that is one day for the two meetings, so I don't know if you want to change it to Monday, too. 7:00 PM is off, and then 7, and then, and then 7 is not then.
And you're 7 o'clock?
And you're going to be here. Yeah. Housing, Monday at 7.
Okay.
So since you're going to be here, yeah, and then you're going to have two minutes. All right, I want to turn a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye. The ayes have it, thank you so much, councilors.